Everyone and welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, November 3rd of 2020. Welcome everyone, and I apologize, we're a little bit late here this morning. Lisa's been kinda busy.
Yeah, so that's a good thing.
That's a good thing. We want people to be busy this morning and to get out there and vote early. Just a reminder, exercise your right to vote today. And with us today, we have KMAQ, looks like we have the newspaper Kelly, and myself, Mike Steinis. Luang Goki is our executive assistant, is in the background. Lisa is here, our county auditor. Larry McDevitt, and Jack Willie, and myself, Mike Steinis, your county supervisors. And did I miss anyone? I apologize. First on our agenda today is Mr. Todd Keeney or Mike Clausen from our engineer department. Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Morning.
Okay, first thing I have is a final voucher for 400th Avenue Z20 for the asphalt research. It's the building in Sprigville. We asked the board to approve the final voucher.
So moved, one second.
Have a motion and second to approve the final voucher for 400th Avenue known as Z20 going into Sprigville. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed nay? Motion carried.
Okay, next I have a driveway permit for Dan Steffen and Hottecrick Township. Section 13, it's a field entrance on the south side of 267th Street. It meets the site distance. We asked the board to approve that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve the field entrance for Dan Steffen, Hottecrick. Section 13 as presented. All those in favors say aye. Aye opposed nay? Motion carried.
Okay, and then next thing, Anna, to a list of our weight limited bridges. I know we've talked about it different times, how many we had and everything, so. We've actually replaced five weight limited bridges this year. I came off the list. There's 42 bridges. One of, one of those bridges actually closed on V Road. We've got six of the bridges that are on the list are currently on the five year road plan. They'll be replaced by 2025. Those six bridges will all be off the list. There's four bridges on B and C roads, and then you have the cabin bridge, which we're anticipating just to close once that gets weak enough. It's a six ton bridge right now. There's actually, including the cabin bridge, there's actually four river bridges on the list. So those are major projects, expensive projects. The Canton River Bridge is numbered, listed as number 42 there. The weight limit is only, is at 38 ton, legal load is 40 ton, so it's just under the weight limit, the legal weight limit.
How old is that bridge?
But I would guess it was probably built in the early 60s, like.
I'm thinking, you know, I can remember when it was built.
Yeah.
But.
So what's the regulations when, when the local ag community can run 90,000 for an extended period of time here during harvest season? That's, the weight limit on the bridge is still 38 ton, correct?
Yes.
So they have to abide, they should abide by the posting.
We had to go through and put all vehicles, have the weight limit in the law, we put a sign that says all vehicles. And then they have to abide by it. If you didn't have all vehicles signed, I don't think they have to abide by it.
Otherwise they weren't.
But we do have all those, all the bridges are posted. All the posted bridges have that all vehicles sign.
Good.
Okay.
So I guess that's all I have.
So the Class B roads, are we still responsible for those bridges?
We're still responsible for them, but it's, has kind of been the board's policy, at least is what I've heard in the past. There's not a priority over the other bridges.
That's true.
So the last road we closed, the road.
That's a Class C then.
C. I mean, we basically acknowledge that we would not take responsibility for that bridge anymore.
Well, it's still our bridge. We still have to, to maintain it.
We still maintain the Class C ones?
Any bridge that's on our, on our road system, and Class Cs are still our road system until you vacate them and they go back to private citizens. Then.
All Class C does is limit the access to certain property. So it's still, it's a limited access public road is what it is still.
But we publicly said that when we, when we closed that to a Class C and put the gates up. We said this to the landowner knows that we're not gonna maintain that bridge anymore.
I remember that conversation.
Absolutely, we did.
It doesn't.
Doesn't do a damn thing for us. I can say what I want, but I can't enforce it. Is that what you're saying?
Close that bridge or whatever, you don't want to get to the point where it's bad enough, we can close it without replacing it. I mean, that's.
Yeah.
An option.
Unless the bridge is closed, you still are responsible to inspect it by, that's an IBIS standard. So if it's still open to the public, which it technically is, under limited access, you still have to inspect it.
Okay, but if it gets really bad, we just go in and close the bridge?
You could, you could. So when you close it though, then you're effectively limiting access so someone could, could sue the county for damages, basically, because you're, if they have no other access, if they have another access, they, they, they could sue, but they probably wouldn't. You'll be fucked. But as long, you know, as long as they have another access, you'd be all right.
Even if it's 10 miles around.
Well.
No, another access to the property, whether, so they have a road that touches the property that's got the closed bridge on it. But they got another road that touches the property.
That they can get in and out.
They can get in and out, then they wouldn't have any claim for damage.
So when you take off the other bridges, we're down to 31 bridges that we're concerned about. Not that we're not concerned about the being a priority bridge.
Yeah, and again, I mean, you could, you could limit these. I know, like I said, too specific that are on a basically a dead end road that are 25 ton. You know, and they're probably never gonna be over 25. Well, I guess, say never.
Sounds if they take a semi in there.
Yeah, no, you ain't gonna get a semi in there. That's, that's the same, you know, so.
Yeah, some of them can.
There's five dead end road bridges.
Yeah.
You know, and this list does include the, the 82nd Avenue Bridge and apply it for the bill grant.
So have we ever heard back from an estimate from I W?
We've got the, what they're recommending for repairs, and I've given it to Dan Schrader to, to see if he can give us an estimate on the cost. We don't have that back yet.
Yeah, so today, I've been kind of working with Stacy, and I'm gonna talk to Mike. We're gonna send a letter with an invoice to the companies, insurance company, that, that damaged the bridge. So the county's expenses today, which would include the county employees in time to go out, sign it, clean, clean up the, you know, the debris and everything from the original strike, and then I W's time today to prepare the, to basically to inspect it, Alex's time. And then also to prepare the details for repair. So we have that report, what they're recommending to, to do, repair it to its pre-strike condition. And then, once we get that quote back, then I think we probably need to have a conversation slash negotiation with the insurance company, depending on what that number is. So if it's, if it's, there's a threshold probably where if it's low enough, you fix it back to pre-strike condition. If that number gets too high, then you'd be better off just taking that money and putting it towards replacing it. Do something that is fully legal load, then you, it'd be kind of like, you know, when your car gets hit.
Sure.
You know, you.
So can you designate, I would say, that portion of it, say, take, yeah, this is what, what we want to wait until we have enough funds to replace it. We can take them funds that we get from the insurance company and put it there for that bridge.
Yeah, so the funds would come into the secondary road department, which the board can't touch after that. Like, ah, no. So yeah, you just put it in the secondary road fund as, as miscellaneous revenue, right? And then you just earmark that.
Well, it's ear tagged up.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. And then, so you'd only fix, that's one span, so you'd fix that span. Would be, just depends, if the rest of the bridges, the approach spans are in decent shape, and they're not the reason it's low rated, then you just fix that trust.
Yeah. 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 Is. Take a short recess at this time. Must have been going off to Lincoln County yesterday. We will reconvene at this time. All right, I apologize, gentlemen. So we had, we were having discussion on the damaged bridge, and we're still waiting to.
Once we get the, the repair quote, if you will, then we, once that information is handed, then we probably need to come back to the board. And have you guys decide, you know, I guess, we'll make a recommendation on what to do, and then you guys determine if that's the course of action you want to take. Whether we fix it to pre-strike condition or we.
Well, it's all gonna lie. Yeah, I mean, just gonna determine whatever the bid may be or whatever.
Has the insurance company sent anybody out to give an estimate?
No, I think our letter with our initial invoice, that's why I wanted to send the initial invoice to kind of start the, if we're gonna have issues, I wanna know upfront, yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
The insurance company, well, I don't know if it's insurance company or the company that get it, send a engineer out.
Oh, okay.
The insurance company has contacted our office.
So we have a rough estimate of what it costs to replace the bridge, or do we need to go forward and have Alex design the bridge for that? So we got a hard number to work with? That's probably not part of the insurance deal, but.
No.
No.
Yeah, at some point, once we get the quote back from the contractor, we'll need that information. And I guess that would be, I'd have to look at it. It's a pin, it's a single span trust, right? And what does it span, like 80 feet or 90 feet?
I think it's longer than that.
Yeah, I think it is too.
Yeah, so you're probably going out of the realm of even say a boltie like pre-stressed beam. What's the farthest they can go, like 120, 30 feet maybe? Yeah, that, you're, that's a speciality for design, too, because those beams are tall, so your, your pier that those, the trust sits on is not gonna have the height required. So you're not gonna have the vertical clearance that you would need to set six, seven foot tall beams to span that length like you would with a trust. Because basically, the trust is like a beam. The outside of the beams, or the trusses are like beams, except that it's like upside down. So the beam goes this way up instead of down. So yeah, you probably have to almost build another pier or another cap on the existing butt, cantilever. So you'd have to cantilever out from the existing piles, so you could have a lower cap, so you could set these deeper beams, so the top of the deck is flush all the way across.
Right, and then give them clearances for that probably, you know, because you're gonna restrict flow, you're gonna lower the beams.
It's, I'm guessing it's a high bridge, is it not?
It is a high bridge. I would call it a high.
Wasn't high enough for the truck though.
No, I mean.
Underneath. Well, he could have drove under. I'm talking about underneath.
Yeah, he could have drove under it.
Yeah.
So hey, there's a lot, so how wide is the bridge? So there's a lot to consider. Do you wanna spend, I'm guessing this is gonna be a few hundred thousand dollars to make it load legal for most trucks, but only have it 20 feet wide? Is that something you want to do?
Well, I guess we'll have to.
We need to look at what the, what the estimate is, and I think we need to consider just putting it towards a new bridge.
When we did, put the information together for the bill grant, where he estimated that 1.8 million. And we did get another email, Todd got one to, I guess we made it through the first round.
Medium cut, yeah. That's a, but they. Shortlist immediately.
Yes, yeah, they actually sent the email to 22 other counties, so this we're down to the 23, so.
I wouldn't hold your breath, put it that way. It's a good sign.
But they asked for more information, so I put that together and sent that out.
Okay, all they can do is hope. Yeah. It certainly should be on the list, that's for sure.
Okay, High Bridge Road, update on projects. High Bridge Road is open up there.
Heard that. Bus drivers are happy. Bus drivers are happy.
Oh, that's good.
Clarence, he likes to cite distance, but he, he spoke with him the other day, actually.
Okay, the 45th Street, the Day Labor Bridge, our guys are finishing up the buttments on it today and tomorrow. Should be open by tomorrow night, I believe, or the next day at the latest. They're gonna be pouring the deck on the Day Labor Bridge up on 341st. Either tomorrow or Thursday, Friday, Thursday, and they started on the 364th Bridge today. Close the bridge down there.
Oh, great.
Coming along.
More good news.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I got a call from Dave Kendall, and he told me to tell the secondary roads department. He was extremely appreciative of all of the consideration you gave the people on their road, and he's thrilled with the outcome.
And I talked to him, he was pretty happy when we were, when travel on there, he was pretty happy.
Yeah, he said, Mike did a great job.
I've got a question on Mill Creek Road. So in the last two or three months, there has been a parking lot installed up there. I don't remember ever hearing a permit for, do they need to get a permit for that, or is that? Through the D N R, yeah, through the D N R.
Yeah, that's a, it's an Iowa.
Yeah.
Heritage something.
So they don't need to come in and say, can we do this?
They got a driveway permit for that.
They did?
From us, yes.
Okay, okay, so basically, the driveway is as wide as the parking lot.
Yeah, pretty much. It's not very big.
And that's at the whole, Mill Creek Homestead?
No, no, it's, it would be further, north of that.
For that area, though.
Well.
It's for the conservation land to the west, I would call it, that west.
That's a state one, right?
Huh?
The, the Holmes County, but the other part of the state isn't.
Yeah, the, the wetlands there, yeah. It's, it's not for that area. It's farther to the west.
Yeah.
Okay.
Something toward the mother.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
I think it, actually, if you go on the upper side, and it butts the state ground up there where the, where the tower is, correct?
Yeah, I think it was up on the.
Yeah, I think you're right. Because there was an individual lost there last week, actually. They were from Scott County and deer hunting, and they shot a deer and found their deer. By that time, it was really dark, and coyotes were out, and they had no idea where they were at.
That'd be scary.
Yeah, it was. They found them.
Tell me about your eighth ship secondary application.
Oh, yeah, we've got it. In 2022, we're doing the, the road south of Miles, and with joint project with Clinton County. And we're gonna apply for a grant to widen the shoulders, two foot paved shoulders with the rumble strips on that, and put sideline rumble strips. I've got that application ready to go. Clinton County's did that last year on Z34, and they're, they're gonna do it on Z40, when we do our joint project.
Awesome.
So it would just be a continuation of that, and we're going into Miles just about to Centennial Street. Going all the way up to 64.
Wonderful.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Sounds good. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I just have a question for the board regarding budget for secondary road department. So how, do you want me to be involved in that, or just kind of wait and let whoever you're hiring start into that process? Do you want me to initiate discussions review with, with Mike and Stacy or Heidi? Well.
I guess my thought on it was, yes.
Yes.
Because the new guy, probably if, if things work out, it won't start until mid-December or just January, and the process should be started by then. I mean, if you're okay with it, that's my thought process.
So I just was gonna ask, because I didn't want to start in it if, if you guys didn't want me to do that.
No, I think it's easier to fill, fill in information to someone than throw them into the burning pot when he's, you know.
No, that's fine.
I like your idea of doing a 10-year road plan.
I did, yeah, your recommendations of things that you were recommending, I thought they were all in line with, probably needed to be done or started a while ago, maybe.
I apologize, I didn't send it to Mike. I'm like, I regret sending it to Mike. So I, I forwarded it to Mike before I came in here. But yeah, so like, you know, you got your list of 32 there, your 10-year bread, bridge program. Because once you get designed out 10 years, if they're day labor bridges, you can start adding these to your program. It's hard to add a contract labor bridge, because you're set budget-wise through the VR program. But if you have extra funds, or you want to budget extra funds, you can start picking off extra day labor bridges, and it will list down even faster.
That's a wonderful idea. That is, amen.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen. Okay. Okay, let me get squared away here. Are there any other individuals, visitors, or citizens on the line with any comments or comments at this time? If not, we'll move on to Becky Chapin, our human resources administrator. Discussion of possible action on county engineer contract offer. Good morning, Becky.
Good morning. So we had a meeting earlier this morning in closed session to discuss the county engineer vacancy, the candidates that we interviewed, and we discussed a potential offer. If you're prepared to take action on making an offer to one of the candidates, I would just look for a motion to offer the position to candidate A or B of your choice. And then I would recommend authorizing HR to enter on contract negotiations to determine if a salary and start date agreement can be made.
So moved, I would move that we all enter into negotiations with candidate A.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for HR to enter into contract negotiations with candidate A. Um, is there a timeframe? I mean, is it a case where you are gonna go make contact as soon as possible?
I am. If I'm able to get acceptance by the end of the meeting, we could table further action. You could possibly approve the contract today, if I'm able to get in touch with the candidate and get that acceptance.
Okay, so let's address the, the motion that's on the table. All those in favor of entering into contact negotiations with candidate, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed nay? Motion carried.
I would make a motion to table until the end of the meeting, or.
Further action, yeah.
Till further action.
I would second.
I have a motion and a second to table any further action until contact can be made with candidate A and negotiations considered. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed nay? Motion carried.
Okay, I'll go make contact and let, I'll get the name of the call, if I'm able to come back in. I don't, I don't know what else is on your agenda for today, so.
We'll keep our fingers crossed.
No, yeah, we certainly, we certainly let the public know what, what, what's happening.
Terms of innocence will be available to discuss and offer and those kind of things, so hopefully, I don't know, what's your time on here?
Ben's on at 9:50 for our department.
You can maybe have him zoom in if you wanted to.
Sure. Okay.
Yeah.
We'll do that. Just another quick piece of information for you. I did talk to Steve Schrader yesterday. We had a full-time jailer retire. We had a part-time jailer accept the full-time position, and then we had a PRN jailer resign. So the net effect is that we have two PRN positions on call jailers that are vacant right now, or will be within the next two weeks. I'm gonna start the advertising for the sheriff's department over at the paper in KMAQ this weekend, next week, so when you hear those ads, that's why, so.
Okay. Yep, rotation, rotation.
Yep, all right. I'll go make contact and see if I can get back in by the end of the meeting.
Good luck.
All right, thanks, Becky.
All right. Rolling right on here on Election Day. Lisa Smith, our county auditor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This morning, I need a motion is needed to approve the minutes of the October 27th, 2020 board proceedings as written by auditor Smith. And authorize publication in the official newspapers.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the October 27th, 2020 board proceedings as written. Any further discussion?
I believe you voted no on the sign.
Has been changed.
That has been corrected.
All right.
Yeah.
That's all I had.
Yes.
I'll second that.
We just couldn't believe it.
Yeah, well. We had this discussion, yeah.
This is Lisa working too long at night.
Come on, well, you got them out early. It was 7:30 last night.
Oh, is that when I got home?
Maybe 7:59.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I thought, yeah.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed nay? Motion carried.
Motion needed to accept, place on file and authorize the chair signature on the county recorder's report of fees collected for the month of October 2020 in a amount of $46,995.80.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to place on file and authorize the chair signature on the county recorder's report of fees collected for month of October 2020 in amount of $46,995.80 as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed nay? Motion carried.
That's all that I have for the board today.
That's all you got to do today?
I'm gonna have to give ballots.
That's not what she said.
Well, you know, let me just start off with this. Obviously, as with Walker, COVID is on the uptick here in Jackson County.
Rampant.
Yeah, so I think people, voters did really well with adhering to what we wanted them to do. They adhered to face mask, even though we can't mandate it for voters, even today, if you go to the polls on Election Day. Because voting is a constitutional right, I cannot mandate you to wear a mask to go vote. But we really did have wonderful compliance when it comes to that. And as people became COVID positive, they would call the office, and we voted a significant amount of people that were COVID positive curbside. So the employees would wear a mask, wear gloves, everything was sanitized after they were done with the voters. So that went extremely well, and that is also happening at the polls today. I knew of several people already, and even when I was out this morning, they were curbside voting people to try and reduce this spread if we could. So in regards to yesterday, traditionally speaking, we would plan for 100 people to vote on election, the day before the election on Monday. And yesterday, they voted 204 people in the office. So they had a really.
Busy day.
Had a really busy day yesterday. We had a busy Saturday. We had a busy last Friday. So, believe it or not, as of, oh, you know, the mail isn't in yet this morning, but we have a 98% return rate on absentee ballots.
Awesome.
Absolutely awesome. And I believe that that number will rise somewhat because of people. I was at a polling precinct this morning where people had their ballots in their hand. They didn't even open them. But when we mailed them out in October, and they surrendered them at the polls. So that return rate, because of some of that, will also go up. So I think when we really get down to it, we're probably at 60, I think it's like close to 6,400 absentee voters. And.
That's amazing.
It, it's absolutely, absolutely amazing.
And how many voters?
15,000.
16,000.
15, yeah.
And.
Usually get about 10,000 to vote, but I suspect that we're gonna have a higher turnout.
So that's the question is, you know, is this 10, 10, 5, is that a good number? Or will we see closer to 11,000 than already 64, 6,300 have voted absentee? We have registered a lot of people in the last week, and they have voted, so that, you know, it might just all slide the same difference. Yeah. So all in all, I would say we're dealing with COVID. We did have some election officials that were either tested positive or aren't feeling well this morning, or.
Or were exposed.
Correct.
You said the one was.
Yes, so. You know, I always talk about organized chaos. It's a good thing. We were organized, we were ready. We had a backup plan. We instituted a backup plan. It worked. I have all my election officials, and I'm sitting right here with you now. So that's the good news of the day. And the polls are busy. I believe they have enough ballots. I believe we have enough ink pens.
I have an extra one in my truck now.
There you go. So.
I guess, Lisa, I just want to commend your office. I mean, not every county would be this fortunate, and we're, our staff worked so hard, and I really applaud everything that your office does. Thank you very much. I know it's not easy, a lot of hours, but I'm sure glad you're there commanding it.
It's a very emotional day for me.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and you're on the ballot.
You're on the ballot.
And what's really funny is, I received a check this morning, and I have a very supportive family, but. I have a very supportive family, but you, Mike, as a candidate this time, and you, Larry and Jack, as candidates in the past, there is a toll to our families. And.
Absolutely.
It is. It's a, it's an incredible day today. It's an incredible moment. And I am so blessed to be here and to do this. And.
Not as blessed as we are to have you.
Well, we commend for what you're doing and what your office is doing. We want to tell the public, you know, exercise your right to vote. This is what it's all about, seriously.
It is. And you know what? At this point, it is what it is.
Yeah.
And you know what?
At the end of the day, we'll all be satisfied and we'll move on.
We'll have to live with whatever the decisions are.
Absolutely.
You know, the thing is, is that I have said publicly many times on the radio with a candidate forum, I can't do this alone. And what my employees go through, I can't, I like to publicly always mention their names because it's Becky Chapin Bjorn Beck, Shelley Hoy, Mary Stickley, and Daniel Vicard. And we did use Jane Ertz as the part-time person.
I've several people said, it was so nice to see her again.
Yeah, and you know what? She's had fun. And I told her, I gave her, you know, my pep talk from last night, and I said, Jane, we couldn't have done it without you. So you know what? There's just an enormous amount of gratitude being handed out today. And the election officials that are there, I'm not going to say that they're in harm's way. I really want them to protect themselves and to stay safe. But, and just one last thing, you guys, I know maybe you don't know the story, but I always judge my day on the first song that I hear on the radio when I start the morning. And this morning's song, when I got in the car this morning, was the song called Stand Tall. And so when I left Pearson this morning, I said to the election officials, stand tall. You're doing one heck of a job today. And I know that you guys will do a heck of a job throughout the whole day, so.
Well, we should commend our election officials for being there.
Yeah.
Putting themselves at risk.
Yeah.
And all the work that they're doing today, hats off to them.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you. And again, thank you to you. The other thing that I'd like to mention that what you allowed the auditor's office to do by taking those rooms downstairs, it worked amazing yesterday when I took the absentee board down there and being so organized with our supplies and such the absentee board could set up. We were socially distant. We're using our new scanner as we speak, and it just, everything has just really dropped into place.
You certainly needed that room.
For that, I thank you also.
You certainly needed that room, that's true.
Gotta have a team.
We do. We have a wonderful team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on. Luanne, are you available? I can see you anywhere.
I'm here.
Good morning.
All right. Tomorrow, Wednesday, November fourth, at nine AM, is an RTA meeting via Zoom for all three of you. Yay has closed their offices in view until February first. So there will be no in-person meetings until at least that time. Friday, November sixth, from eight-thirty to four-thirty, is the farmer's mental health webinar for any of you that have me register you for that. Monday, November ninth, at seven-thirty AM, is early childhood Iowa's executive board meeting by Zoom for Jack. And at ten o'clock is the Iowa DHS council meeting. I assume that will be by Zoom. I haven't held it yet for Jack. And at eleven o'clock is DHS's orientation for Jack for being on that board. From one-thirty to four o'clock on Monday afternoon is regional governing board, a special meeting via Zoom also for Jack. Tuesday, November tenth, is our next regular meeting at nine AM. That evening at six-thirty is the Macaca River Watershed Management Authority's water monitoring update by Zoom for all of you. The only other business I have today is the Lions have asked supervisors to approve a proclamation declaring November as Diabetes Awareness Month.
Would, um, would you like to read that?
I can do that.
Or do you want me to read that?
Whatever you want.
Doesn't matter.
Whereas diabetes is growing at an epidemic rate worldwide affecting more than four hundred and sixty-three million people, the International Diabetes Federation estimates that by 2045, there will be more than seven hundred million people living with the disease. The United States ranks third out of the top ten countries in diabetes diagnosis, following India at number two and China at number one. And whereas diabetes is growing at an epidemic rate in the United States, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC, nearly thirty-four million Americans have diabetes and face its devastating complications. What's true nationwide is also true in Iowa. And whereas, according to the American Diabetes Association, diabetes affects approximately two hundred and twenty-five thousand people in Iowa, nine-point-three percent of the population, and is a serious disease for which there is no known cure and which is the seventh cause of death by disease in the United States. And whereas, according to the American Diabetes Association, approximately seventy thousand people in Iowa have diabetes but do not know they have the disease and may experience damage to the heart, eyes, kidneys, and limbs greatly increasing their health risk. And whereas, according to the American Diabetes Association, another eight hundred and twenty thousand people in Iowa, thirty-four-point-one percent of the adult population have prediabetes, a condition which puts them at greater risk for developing type-two diabetes. And if current trends continue, one in three American adults will have diabetes by 2050. And whereas diabetes has many faces affecting everyone, young and old alike, Caucasians, African-Americans, Latinos, Native Americans, Asian-Americans, and Pacific Islanders, with minority populations in the United States having an increased risk for developing the disease. And whereas, an increase in community awareness of risk factors and symptoms related to diabetes can improve the likelihood that people with diabetes will get the attention they need before suffering the devastating complications of the disease.
Now, therefore.
Now, therefore.
Aye.
Aye.
Michael Stein has hereby proclaimed November twenty-twenty as Diabetes Awareness Month in Jackson County, Iowa, and encourage all citizens to help fight this disease and its deadly complications include heart, kidney disease, stroke, blindness, amputation. By increasing awareness of the risk factors for diabetes and by providing support to those suffering from diabetes. So that is the proclamation. With that being said, with all the things that are going on in the world today, let's not forget that this is very serious.
I would move we approve proclamation and have the chair sign.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the proclamation as presented and have the chair sign. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. So there is other things among us besides COVID. Let's take it all serious. Be aware, be safe for yourself and others. And at this time, we will take a short recess. We will reconvene at this time, and joining us is Ben Coburn, our Jackson County zoning administrator. Good morning, Ben.
Good morning. So last week, I believe, with Wednesday morning, we received something from FEMA. So they're basically saying that our ninety-day appeal period for the preliminary flood insurance rate maps will be starting tomorrow. So.
So what are we appealing?
So basically, the grounds, the type of things that could be appealed would be any changes from the old, from the effective flooding map we have right now, which were approved in 2010. And so these new maps, the original set we got was on August twenty-second, 2018. If there have been any changes in those special flood hazard area boundaries, so a one percent annual flood chance that boundary moves out to cover more ground, stuff like that, any kind of changes in a base flood elevation that would bring more property in, those are the types of things that are, that can be appealed.
So we're not talking private individuals here appealing. We're talking about. Private individuals can appeal, but they need to appeal to us. We are the only ones that can send it in.
So, yeah, I think that is kinda, I think the community is allowed to collect all that. So in this case, unincorporated Jackson County can collect.
Well, and we talked about it two years ago, that.
Right.
The individuals need to know the changes that were made. If they're in a hundred-year, fifty-year floodplain now, and we're in a five-hundred-year, they need to know.
Right.
You know, I mean, insurance companies need to acknowledge that and get them made aware of it.
I know Heather had sent out notices to people that were.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Included in it where they weren't before.
Yeah.
There's still some maps out that are not right. I know Lacy got one for the mill, and they showed water all the way around the building. Well, one side of that building is into a bluff, and they're showing water up there, which would be, I don't know, thirty.
Fanhard.
Yeah, and so.
That's when water runs uphill.
So I don't know what the situation is on some of that. I know these maps are accurate because they're done with white hour.
Yeah, like I guess I don't, I don't have any reason to like see any kind of glaring, I guess, mistakes or problems with these preliminary. They've done a lot more detailed studies. The Iowa Flood Center at U of I has, you know, you go on their website, and they've got all sorts of, they've got so much data, so much information, you can adjust the inundation levels for various, you know, points of flood. So like, I think the methodology is, you know, it appears to be mostly correct. So the challenge is going to be for a property owner who wants to appeal this is that they have to. Figure out where they, like, what flood zone they're in. Do they have a base flood elevation? So for the Mississippi River and the Macaca River, we've got base flood elevation. So those are going to be the more detailed areas of study. But then we've got these, you know, smaller streams, creeks, that maybe we don't have a base flood elevation. You know, there might be room for there where if, you know, a property owner is able to do a study themselves, and by study, I mean probably a flood elevation, like an elevation certificate to show like, hey, this is my house, which you included in the new maps, is we elevated it by fill or it's clearly up on this hill. And we called the DNR, here's the elevation they gave us, like, we're clear. But those are situations that would normally be handled by a letter of map amendment or a letter of map provision based on fill. So, but basically, like, you know, to have, like, any grounds for appeal, they're going to have to be able to show that whatever data they're using is somehow better than FEMA's information and, you know, the firms that have done these studies and have all this data. Like, and I guess I, I would be skeptical that there's going to be a lot of that unless we've had some, you know, big development or big, you know, a lot of earth being moved around that, you know, we're not too sure about, I guess, so. But I would say a ninety-day appeal period puts us early February. Right now, that's when the deadline, so, you know, at this point, you know, we should probably figure out if, you know, as a community, do we want to try to collect any potential appeals? You know, and say like, let's try to give people a month and a half or something to come up with that, and then.
Is this something that we need to get on the radio, on the newspapers?
They have a public hearing about this or a public meeting. Do we need to do that again? Informational meeting?
So this says their, their second publication should be tomorrow in Central Preston and probably Thursday, or no, tomorrow for Preston as well. They're both on Wednesday, I think. So then there's the nine, that's when the ninety-day appeal period was, sorry.
The problem is people don't see them.
Yeah, I, yeah, exactly. I don't think that we are required to do anything, but, you know, as far as getting some word out, I think that's worth bringing up now. Back in 2018, when, you know, we were hoping to have this process done by now if it wasn't for, you know, shutdown, COVID, a bunch of stuff that just, you know, really hampered things. That we did have open houses here, and we had some people attend to say, you know, get some more information. And, you know, I think that, and then, like you said, Heather had sent out some information to those folks.
So could we recopy the letters Heather sent out and send them out again? Does, do we have a, we had that?
I would, I would hope so if they're, yeah.
Because those are the properties that were affected by it.
I'll see if Bjorn has any way to get a database for me, if I want to, you know, something there. And then.
That would get us ahead of the ballgame, because if we need to report it, we don't want to wait till.
No, we don't. No, you don't want to wait till eighty-nine days, no.
Yeah.
And I really think the biggest concern was the levee in Sevula, which they had their levee accredited, and, you know, the majority of their town is now in a five-hundred-year floodplain. It's protected by the levee instead of it being up in the air, ambiguous about whether that, so. But obviously, that's not unincorporated county. So, you know, I think, probably looking up, getting ahold of all of that, see what we have for that information. Because the old flood, the current floodplain maps, and then these proposed new floodplain maps were on Beacon. So really, anybody could go look at that. Now they're not on there, so I don't know if, you know, what changes were made. But I can, you know, I could go on the Iowa Flood Center's site to see where those maps are as far as the digital version, but, you know, I think it was really useful if people ever had that question to ask about floodplain changes. I could just look it up on Beacon, look up the property line. So for some reason, it's not on there anymore and probably need to figure out if we can get that back on there.
I think we can make a contact.
Yeah, that would be good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No doubt.
So, you know, I think.
I mean, that's information that people readily should be available.
Yep.
Rather than come over here and look at the maps or something like, you know.
Yes.
And even for the insurance companies, we have a legitimate map to look at instead of using the old.
Builders, contractors, yeah, the whole, the whole smear, yeah, buyers, sellers, yeah.
So, let's see here. Yeah, so it does say any, any owner or lessie of real property who believes that his or her property rights will be adversely affected by the proposed flood hazard determinations may appeal to us or an agency that we publicly designate. So probably to keep things simple, just, you know, keep it in-house, either, you know, just give me a call or.
Zoning.
Yeah, I think that's the best way to do it, especially because we'll be looking that information up. And like I said, the basis of the appeal, they would have to possess some knowledge with a scientific or technical basis. They can't just say, well, I've lived here for thirty years, and that creek's never, you know, it's never flooded, or it's never gotten up to my house, like, that's just not going to cut it. I've heard that one. It's like, you know, the map for the maps, you, you may never see a flood, but your mortgage, you know, your lender is gonna.
Yeah.
Catch it and make you get flood insurance, so.
That's the issue. I know that's the issue with the mill. They said, well, it floods. And it says, no. I mean, the building's designed in eighteen sixty-seven, and it goes through all the floods. There's no, there's nothing that can get flooded, you know, any damage that can be done to the building because of the way it was designed.
So like that, the lowest habitable floor, you know, is above that flood elevation. Waste, okay, so, you know, my only thought on, another thought I had about how to handle those appeals, you know, assisting people to get in touch, if it's just simply getting an elevation certificate, you know, I really try to avoid making recommendations when people call me, you know, how do I survey this property? You guys do it like, well, no, you need a surveyor to do it. Like, would there be a way to, you know, this is, this might be an expensive process for folks that want to do this.
No doubt.
So, you know, is there, if we say, okay, we're going to appeal on behalf of, I don't know, twenty landowners who come up with these issues, do we say, you all need to get together? Get one, you know, see if you can make this more affordable for your all, and, you know, he's gonna plan on, he or she is going to plan on having a big project in the county. he or she is going to plan on having a big project in the county doing elevation certificates or some kind of topography studies or whatever. So you know, that's kind of, I don't know, like, you know, like you pointed out, we had these two years ago, we sent
Right.
all this stuff out. And there was some engagement, but we definitely need to
All right. Well, you check with Bjorn and see what kind of database of whatever you may be able to find. Maybe we could do that again. And of course, there's not been any changes since that, correct?
There, um, the Sebula one I mentioned, that was, that was the big one. Um, I think there was some areas around the south part of Macoka and kind of a more detailed study, Southern Jackson, Northern Plin County.
So can we get the information out to the individuals so that they can know where to look?
I think they'll look at a computer and see if we can Yeah, right?
Yeah.
And I think we need to, maybe you need to talk to Jess in the assessor's office and see if she can contact.
Yeah, well, we can talk to Snyder, Lincoln Snyder and see what, what the situation there is. You know, it's getting that put back on there.
Yeah, that should be alerted. That's on.
Yeah.
It used to be over on the side there, yeah, where you could click on it.
Yeah.
I think that's, you know, that's just really useful for
Yeah.
us and then, you know, people looking to buy or sell. So, um, but yeah, this letter they sent has all that, you know, has information on where you can go to look at that. But when on FEMA's website, it's just the official copies. It's not like it's the GIS to look at actual detail. The Iowa Flood Information Service or System, I don't know, IFIS. You go there and you can mess around with this map. It's really great. You, you know, not just for
But the average drill is not going to do that.
Probably.
Or might not know how to do it.
It takes time, you know, I mean, it's it's an effort, yeah.
And I know we've had a few webinars, even, you know, this summer and
To walk through it.
to go through that. And I was sitting in on a lot of that. And I'm like, well, this is the fourth, fourth or fifth time I've seen it. But you do go on the website, it's quite intimidating because you kind of have to know, this is what they're trying to tell me what I want to look at. But, you know, and I don't know if that's actually what I want to see. Some people think 100-year flood, but they use 1% annual flood as a chance, you know, so it's hard to try to figure out what that is.
So part of your job now too is somebody, if there's a stream bed out there or like on my property where there's an area, if I start filling out across the valley because, to give me more space, that's encroaching on the floodplain and it's narrowing that flow down. And this is one of the things they talk about on that. And most people don't understand it. They just keep dumping more bricks and rocks and stuff.
Well, that's part, that's part of the big detention plan too, you know, as far as this flow and where's your retention, detention, you know? I mean, that was all designed, once you start moving dirt, you change.
Nature has done that, like
Sure.
The bottom used to be a storage area. The mill prime was six to seven acres and it's filled with dirt.
Good dirt.
Yeah, good dirt. Yeah. And you can see it's
Remember up here when they tried to change the channel of the creek up by, oh, Davison's? They were
Trying to move somewhere else.
Moving the river flow, changing the way it flowed. We had to put it back the way it was.
Well, there was one on 216th Street, which is Michael Shan's property down there. And Clark said, well, we can't change that because and it was eating away on the road. I mean, you could actually stand on the road and fish. And I'm like, I remember that as a kid, I would help drive cattle up and that creek was over there.
Yeah.
And it had swam or moved around and was taking out the road. And we did put gravel in and because there's no place to put fence.
And that's, you know, a lot of that comes from 150 years plus of
Settlement.
Yeah, remove it, agricultural, removing the prairies. And so it's, we've seen a lot of new streams and
Different channels move around.
Do that stuff. So, um, but yeah, that's going to be, uh, you know, I'll try to look at some, compare the maps if we can, whether or not we can get that on there quickly, you know, just start comparing those. If there's anything new, I know they had, the new maps were, there were some revised ones this spring, April 2020. So I'll just check on those to see if there's anything, you know, because there could be some new, um, folks that, some changes that got included that. But, you know, we didn't have a third follow-up when some of those came.
The only other thing that kind of concerned me in here was the rules and regulations as of 2011. I mean, this is a whole new setup here. I think they should update that.
Well, yeah, we'll have, we will have to, um, once these maps are, you know, a fit, you know, not pollinator anymore, we have to go through our approval process for what's on margin and refer to new maps. And, um, you know, they'll probably have updated minimum requirements. We've always gone with the minimum of what the Iowa DNR and FEMA require as far as, you know, going above the base flood elevation. There's probably some other things that they want to see changed for because bottom line, you know, they want people to stop building in the floodplain. They want people to leave out of the floodplain. And, um, you know, so they're going to have new minimum requirements to try to avoid, you know.
And they had that here in Jackson County with Sebula, the floodplain down. They bought off those farms. So they could use it for retention areas to slow the water down.
Most of them anyway.
About one.
Well, we'll probably, probably hear from him again. But I don't think any changes were made to his stuff since 2018. So but yeah, anyway, so I will go talk with Bjorn about what we can do to find that, that layer and, you know.
Can talk to Jess too.
Yes, absolutely. I'll do that.
Okay, okay. Thanks, Ben. Okay. Any other boards or commission reports that anybody would like to, uh, report on at this time? I don't have anything new that I need to report, I don't think. Have, we didn't have any, Becky has not contacted us.
Maybe touch base with her and see.
See what the status is.
Hello, they, they're all doing everything else. They just asked me to check if he was going on.
Take a short recess at this time. We are back and we will reconvene at this time. And again, we are joined by our human resources administrator, Becky Chapin.
So I did reach out to the candidate and he is wanting to take some time to consider the offer I presented. He did not give me a specific timeline. Um, I will follow up with him by the end of the day to see what his thoughts are. Um, and we can always, if we are able to reach a contract, we can always do a special meeting with 24 hours notice
Sure.
to approve it. Otherwise, it would be next Tuesday. So I will give him to the end of the day. I did let him know that. I emailed it to him and told him that I would visit with him again. So
Well, that's all reasonable that he needs to review the offer.
I'm not sure about the terms, um, of engineer contracts within different states. So what we have to offer may be different than what is afforded in a different state. So I think just that may be something that we need to consider.
Okay. Well, we sure appreciate that. And if you come up with, uh, any information or have heard anything, let us know and we'll, if we need to call a special meeting, we can do that.
Yep.
Okay. Any other business before the board this morning?
I would move to adjourn.
Second.
Set our auditor free.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Meeting adjourned. People, please get out and vote today. Exercise your right to vote.